Thank you, Mr. Tyree. Thank you, Mr. Ty- Welcome to the Monday, July 22nd, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Whitten, will you now call roll?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Lord, we thank you for the much-needed rain that we have received. I pray for our nation and our leaders. We don't always understand, but I know that you are in control. And now I pray that you will guide us and help us to make the right decisions at our best for Rockbridge County now and in the days to come. Yes, I pray. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its essence for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. Keep in mind that if your comments relate to our public meeting, you might want to wait until that time to speak. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen's comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Recognition of John Mayo on his retirement. Mr. Muir?
Here.
Do you like- Hello?
Daniel, would you like to come up a minute with John? I was glancing around, I didn't see him, he was hidden.
Stand right over there.
Well. Did you want- you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Yeah.
I've been here for four years now, and it's been a pleasure to know John, not just in a managerial-type role, but just as a friend and a person. He has brought a lot to the department, to the recycling. And I know he'll be missed by a number of the citizens that come into Greenhouse Road and certainly by all of his peers and workers. So we thank you for your years of service, and we wish congratulations on your retirement.
I'd like to add too, I moved to the county in 1995, and John was literally one of the first people I met in the county out of Greenhouse, or not at Greenhouse, when he was out behind Tractor Supply. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that he was still here when I got here almost 12 years ago, and he's just been an absolute pleasure to work with.
And as one of those people that go to the recycling center and see him, and I recycle, I throw everything in the truck, and then I sort it there. And I want to thank you for all the times you have helped me out. So, thank you very much.
We have a resolution for you, John, and I'd just like to read into the record and let you hear it. I have a voice too. A resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors to John Mayo, collection attendant, on the occasion of his retirement after 31 years of service. Whereas John Mayo began his full-time employment on March 1st, 1993, as a collection attendant. And whereas Mr. Mayo has served the solid waste and recycling department for more than 31 years. And whereas Mr. Mayo was a very dedicated and loyal employee, performing his duties in a most professional manner, consistently providing excellent service to the citizens of Rockbridge County and his coworkers, who he was always willing to assist. And whereas Mr. Mayo's duties included operating and maintaining the county's collection sites for many years, ensuring they were pristine and in safe condition for the residents. And whereas Mr. Mayo was an integral part of opening the county's first site at College Square Shopping Center and other sites, including Greenhouse Road, Fairfield, and Cars Creek Collection Centers. And whereas Mr. Mayo used his knowledge of the solid waste and recycling collections operations to provide leadership and training to many new employees during his career, and was a good friend to all he encountered. And whereas Mr. Mayo has chosen to retire after many years of public service, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Rockbridge do hereby express deep appreciation to John for his 31 years of dedicated service to the citizens and employees of Rockbridge County, and offer sincere congratulations and best wishes for a happy and rewarding retirement. Now, also be it resolved that the Board presents this resolution of appreciation to Mr. Mayo to serve as a reminder that although he is retiring, he will always be remembered as kind, considerate, and loyal individual dedicated to both his position and his family. Adopted this 22nd day of July, 2024.
Thank you.
With that, I move, we adopt, officially adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day, and I vote yes. Thank you. Would you have a picture with us?
It's hard, you got to.
Just stand right up here in the middle. They're gonna come down.
Oh, oh, I'll put the woman.
No, no, no.
You burned your time.
Smile is always, Joe. All right, thank you, Joe.
Now, on to the Litter Cup Award. Mr. Muir?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we thank you for allowing us to take a few moments to recognize the winners of the 2024 Litter Cup. This year, there were 16 teams that signed up, a little over 215 individuals that took the time, the last week of March, to clean up the litter around their county. So thankful for all those who participated. Before we award the cup, I just want to take a moment to thank one team in particular, the G Litter Bugs. This was represented by the Sheriff's Office. Elizabeth Taylor, the Office Manager for the Sheriff's Department, organized a number of cleanups, both with resource officers in the schools and some of the students there. They collected over 110 bags and large items during the time that they collected. They did not win the cup just because they did not have pictures to show all the items that they collected. So on a technicality, they did not win, but I did want to thank them also. They did place some mobile signs, you may have seen them weeks after the cleanup at the Boat Lock Site and Timber Ridge on Route 11. And those signs were effective in helping those sites to stay clean for a few weeks at least. So we do thank them for their work there. But this year, the winner of the 24 Litter Cup was again the litter eliminators. This is their fourth year in a row that they have won this award. They picked up 101 bags, including large items, tires, furniture, et cetera. They cleaned again around the Route 60 corridor, East and West, from 81. They also cleaned bypass or corporal drive area, and they did a great job as always. They spent the whole week, maybe week after or so, cleaning up the areas and just did a great job making those areas look beautiful again. So this team consisted of Jenny and Larry Keel, Leslie Lee, Brandon Spalding, and new this year was Heather Sanchez. So if you guys would come up, we would like to award you again the Litter Cup for this year.
Can we have a picture? Okay. You guys can come here. You all. On behalf of the county, thank you all so much. Oh, sure, absolutely. Nope.
Because we take all of our pictures.
Thank you all. Thank you. We will now welcome citizens' comments. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium, stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up?
You check.
We'll need you, Brandy. Okay, is there anyone online who is there? Hand raised to speak.
Sign the mouse. No one with their hand raised.
Is there anyone in the meeting room who wishes to address the board but did not sign up? We will move on then to the approval of the June 24 and 2024 and June 25, 2024 minutes. Does everyone have time to review these draft minutes? And if so, we are going to split those. So I would welcome a motion for June 24, 2024.
Move to approve the June 24th, 24 minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Day, and I vote yes. And now may I have a motion to approve the June 25th, 2024 minutes?
So move.
Daniel, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Abstained.
And I vote yes. We'll now move on to the school appropriation resolution.
Yes, Mr. Harrison is on a well-deserved vacation this week, and so you have to struggle through with me. But the appropriation resolution in front of you is specific to the Natural Bridge Elementary School HVAC project that the Board approved earlier this year. At that time, the Board agreed to take the project cross from reserves at a cost savings. The cost of the project is $3,283,326. However, we still anticipate getting approximately a 30% rebate back on that project. I spoke with Dr. Thompson today because I thought you might want to know how the project is going. And he said it's going full bore, and it's expected to be complete before students return. And so again, the request is to approve the appropriation resolution in front of you.
Wonder. There any questions, comments? Not? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution, Mr. Suter.
Yeah, there's a few notes from Mr. Harrison's report. I want to highlight the FY '25 budget book and CIP have been posted online. Also, the school division ended the year with a surplus of $110,866, which per policy has been added to the school capital reserve escrow account. The county ended the year with a surplus of approximately $417,000. We'll have an exact figure at the Board's next meeting. There are still a few outstanding things that Mr. Harrison and staff are working on. And we have started the required pre-audit to our annual audit. And of course, the last action item request is to adopt the attached appropriation resolution in the amount of $1439,518.67. Of that, $95,136 is for the county's obligation to the mode economic incentive, which you approve.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions, comments? Not?
I'll offer a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Consideration of drought emergency declaration.
Yes, while we are very happy to have received some much-needed rain today and over some last week, some of fairly widespread, other parts spotty. The county and much of our region remains in a long-term moisture deficit. And after discussions with Tom Stanley, who's with us tonight, in our Cooperative Extension Office, we are recommending adoption of a drought emergency declaration. The process is outlined in my board report and your package and its attachments. I will note that the process has changed a bit since the last declaration was made in 2023. So rather than petitioning directly our state and federal elected officials, the process goes through the U.S. Department of Agriculture with copies to elected officials. So to just let them know we're asking for that. And you also note that the resolution previously posted, since something has been changed, this was my fault. I took, in my haste, I took last year's template, and I forgot to add Delegate Austin to the copy list. So I've added that in there, that's the only change in the reso you see in front of you. And I do appreciate Supervisor Lewis for pointing that out. Thank you, Jay. So the resolution is attached, and Mr. Stanley is with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have. And I believe he also gave you a handout when he got here, showing the drought monitor report, U.S. drought monitor report.
Mr. Stanley, do you have anything you'd like to add? Please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Very briefly, as an update, we're the night we talk about drought seems like it's breaking a lot, and this rate is very rough. Our current drought situation, it's been evolving since last August. And I think in, we can look forward to further communication in a couple of weeks. And we may need to talk to State Director of Farm Certification directly, depending on how the drought monitor evaluates our circumstance here. We may need to make our case related to total moisture levels over the, over a wider span of time than anybody reflects in the drought monitor. I think tonight's drought or drought resolution is appropriate and accurate. Even if we were to receive if rain this week, decent pasture cover can still number of farmers, and that's what I'll be working on next couple of weeks, trying to measure what extent we have livestock producers that are feeding hay, and by the time of August, what happens after, what the corn yields are, whatever corn confidence and comfort. And those will reflect, since the majority of our farms in Rockbridge are livestock operations, and their feed reserves were greatly depleted due to dry weather last fall. There is a federal program, standing federal program for which our cities are qualified. Merchandise livestock assistance program that can help assist in constant transporting feed from distances beyond, outside of the air. And that can be important assistance. We have not yet qualified for that, dependent on our drought monitor rating. And so this is now our status in terms of drought programs. For tonight, this is a good first step to alert the right agency personnel that at Rockbridge County is under a, is recognized as in documenting its drought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt a proposed resolution?
I move we approve.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Consideration of petroleum product delivery bids for FY 2024, Mr. Suter.
Yes, this is an annual process wherein we solicit competitive bids for fuel delivery to each of the five locations where we have storage and pumps in the county. At Fleet Services, at the County Garage, we've got gas and diesel. We've got two 10,000-gallon diesel tanks and one 10,000-gallon gas tank. And at Lake Robertson, we have a 1,000-gallon gas tank. School central offices in Effinger, we've got a 1,000-gallon gas tank. And in Natural Bridge and Elementary and Fairfield Elementary, we each, we have a diesel tank of 1,000 gallons each. As noted in the board report, the request for bids was issued in accordance with procurement policy. We received bids from three vendors, as noted in your report, and lowest-cost bids for each fuel type and location are included in the attached bid sheet, representing the best price for the county in a competitive bid scenario. My request is for the Board to adopt the attached resolution approving the bids and authorizing me to enter into contract.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Move to approve.
For a second. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes.
I'd share, just, I might add, some of those prices are substantially different, and obviously, some tanks are smaller than others and in different locations, et cetera. But as substantially different as they are, I don't know that we just want to, it's an annual process, maybe we want to review size of tanks, where the tanks are, that sort of thing, to see if it makes sense to still have all those locations for such a higher cost. And just thought, I have over the next year, I'm sure those questions will come up. Just wanted to add that. And also, I don't know if there's any scheduling of deliveries that might alleviate any of the costs. I'm not sure exactly of the RFPs or the bid that was put out, so I may be speaking out of turn there.
Well, I did check on that for you today, and it's a on-demand, so they call when they, when they're getting low.
Thank you.
Consideration to approve services agreement with Train US Inc. for the HVAC maintenance at Rockbridge County Courthouse.
Yes, when it came time to reconsider or to consider the courthouse HVAC maintenance contract, Maintenance Technician Don Smith advised that we consider Train, as they have provided very good service through us, and their controls are actually the ones utilized in the system. And the documents in your package have been reviewed, approved by Mr. Dryden, and our request is to approve the included resolution authorizing us to enter into through your contract with Train for the courthouse.
Thank you. There are no questions or comments? Is there a motion?
No motion.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of a resolution to participate in the Kroger opioid settlement.
So this is an ongoing process, as we've already participated in some of the other opioid settlements. In order for us to be able to participate in this opioid settlement, we do need to pass a resolution where we agree to the terms, and we agree that we'll release Kroger from any claims we might have. The reason why Kroger is a part of this is because they are a large distributor of opioid, in the past, were a large distributor of opioid-based drugs, their pharmacy system. And so what, we have the resolution before you, this resolution was not drafted by me, it was provided by the National Council, who's representing all the government localities in the opioid settlement. And it's a requirement that we do pass it if we want to be able to participate and receive funds under the Kroger settlement.
Thank you. Right, gentlemen? Have any questions?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Consideration of a resolution for support of VDOT Smart Scale application for the North Lee Highway pedestrian improvements project. Oh, there you are.
Yes, ma'am. So in, under consideration for the Board tonight are two resolutions associated with the Smart Scale application. As previously discussed, the Office of Community Development, in conjunction with this Timmins Group, has made an application for pedestrian improvements. Essentially, we made the same application, or I should say, the Central Shadow of Planning District Commission, on the county's behalf in 2022, made the same application. Unfortunately, it was not successful in the funding, and so we, Rockbridge County, have made a second application. So essentially, what it does is takes the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk, terminize at the Tractor Supply parking, at the College Square Parking Shopping Center, and then just after the Jefferson Forest on the west side of the road. So what this application does, we of course had a, December of 2020, the Board of Supervisors meeting, the CSPDC presented an overview of the Route 11 pedestrian study. And of course, at that time, the plan, we have plans, the pedestrian study includes taking the sidewalks to the Walmart Shopping Center and down Valley Pike, due to the cost constraints on those, where we've blocked it up in phases, with the first three projects taking the sidewalk from the existing terminize, as explained, excuse me, as explained, to the Greenhouse Road, Route 11 intersection.
Thank you.
So what a resolution does, this is the first of two resolutions. This resolution, it would be submitted on the county behalf with the Smart Scale application.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Chris? There a motion to adopt?
Come on.
If you're a second?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes.
We had discussed the pedestrian walkway from Route 11 to the high school. There's a pathway there. Will this be included in that?
This is not part of that application. It's my understanding that the school board is making preparations to improve that walking path, but it's clear it's not part of this, this study.
It is, a connection is shown on the next one that you're going to send.
Okay.
On the transportation improvements.
Yeah, this is the stages part of it. It's frustrating.
Yes. No more comments? Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I could just add real quick, the Smart Scale program had tried, I should say, anyway, we lobbied the General Assembly to have our small applications, you know, have consideration, which is sort of the point of the Smart Scale thing. But they made some sliding scale rules and changes in there, or they were going to, that could have have even kicked us out so that we couldn't apply again. So it's good that we're able to apply, and the PDC has obviously advocated for this. Chris, I can attest.
Thank you for that. Chris, would you, on consideration of the resolution for support of VDOT Smart Scale application for the North Lee Highway and Greenhouse Road?
Similar area, of course, with the new commercial developments along Econo Lane, we've seen somewhat of growing pains in that intersection. And so again, in conjunction with Timmins Group, Rockbridge County has made a preliminary application to VDOT, to the Smart Scale. And to back up, VDOT, the Smart Scale application is one of the very few, if not the only, that provides 100% funding, unlike revenue sharing, it's an H20 match, that type of thing. So we're excited to get this application in the, in the Smart Scale cycle, if you will. But what this application does is primarily for vehicular improvements, and it would install a bona fide right-turn lane into Econo Lane off of Route 11, obviously, and then a bona fide right-turn lane out of Econo Lane onto Route 11. It also improves the existing left-turn lane into Econo Lane and left-turn lane into Greenhouse Road. With that being said, as Mr. Suter alluded to, there are some pedestrian improvements associated with this, the vehicular traffic. There are some pedestrian improvements associated with this Smart Scale application, and that would get a crosswalk with signalization from the Greenhouse roadside to the Econo Lane side. So that, you'll see on both applications, that's duplicated. So there are some pros and cons to have both those duplicated. So we're in conjunction with the Timmins Group, having discussions with the Timmins Group and VDOT to confirm that's the best way to move forward.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Any questions?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt the proposed resolution.
Daniel, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis? And I vote yes.
Can you all remind me, did you, did you get a full roll call vote on the last one?
Yes.
Okay.
You did. All right, we are going to, in case our applicants are here, we're going to move right through to the Planning Commission and Ms. Hennis has resigned from the Planning Commission, leaving the Wal, not the Walkers Creek, the Cars Creek District Representative seat vacant. One application has been received as of an agenda posting last Thursday and was forwarded to the board for its consideration. The application was submitted was from Mr. Anthony Sabrizi. We received another application today from Mr. Frederick Almy, which was remitted to the board at approximately 1:20. Are there any questions or comments? And do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, thank Ms. Hennis for her years of service and I wish her the best of luck, of luck with her move, and hopefully it'll come an opening in her new district and she'll come back to us. We're very fortunate to have two applicants, both who are very qualified. And I appreciate all the phone calls and emails concerning the vacancy. And at this time, I'd make a motion to have Mr. Anthony Sabrizi fill the vacant position.
I'll second.
All right, is there any other questions or comments?
Is he here this evening, Chance?
No.
What? If not? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis? And I vote yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we do, we do plan to recognize Ms. Hennis at a future meeting.
All right, there's a note, Ms. Hennis served on the TCO as the Planning Commission representative also, and the board will need to consider appointing a member of the Planning Commission to the TCO at its next meeting. With that, we will move on to the public hearings. Admissions tax ordinance. Mr. Dryden?
We brought this issue up before the board in a number of times in the, the most recent amendment that we're, we brought before the board today is to address the issue as to fundraising, and whether or not there should be admissions tax charged to fundraising activities for non-for-profit organizations. The, as you're aware, the admissions tax has been in, in place in the county for now for a few years. We've had amended it a few times in the past. This reason to bring this forward is because there have been questions raised by our volunteer, fire departments and our volunteer rescue squads as to whether or not their fundraising activities should be subject to admissions tax. And the same issue has been brought up by some of our 501(c)(3) charities. The proposals, we present before you two alternative ordinances, which would be amend the admissions tax law, and the, and the first one would be to just exempt all all fundraising activities by the fire departments and volunteer fire departments and rescue squads. And then the, and then it would also exempt one annual fundraising event by 501(c)(3)'s. Further, it will allow, it will empower our Commissioner of the Revenue to require that anyone seeking to have an exemption for their annual fundraising event that they actually register with her, so those things could be tracked. The second ordinance before you is identical, except for it will limit the fire rescue and rescue squads exemption from, from the admissions tax to events held on property they own or they lease. Otherwise, the same language before you. There was one recommendation brought forth by an email which I sent to you actually right before this meeting starts, you may not have had opportunity, but Karen Siegfried, who's the Treasurer of the Brownsburg Museum, sent an email commenting on this. And one point that she made is in the language for an exemption for the fundraiser, we say an annual fundraiser. And it was a little bit confusing whether there was more than one that could be done. So I suggest that if we do adopt this, we change it from an annual fundraiser to one annual fundraiser per year, because I think that was the intent, is that it's just to one per year. No, it was, Karen, Karen did a good job catching that one. So that, if we, if, so if we're in agreement to that, whichever ordinance that you seek to pass, I would suggest that we do amend it to, to have the word one in front of annual fundraiser. So we, we do have a public hearing.
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody signed up?
First speaker is Mr. Steve Reese.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time. Steve Reese from Walkers Creek District, been running Fire and EMS in this county for some 36 years. Current president of the Rockbridge Fire and EMS Association. I became aware of this admission tax, we go into effect Fire and Rescue with Rafi Fire Company's carnival last month. We were caught totally by surprise that we were going to have to try to figure out how to collect this tax. Luckily, we were able to work out a resolution to work around that. I have reviewed the proposed ordinance changes, and I would ask that you support the amendment that exempts fire and rescue altogether and not just on property that they own or lease. We've got several departments represented in the back. I don't think they want to come up and speak, but I'm their designated representative tonight. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reese, thank you very much.
Next up is Andy Bowles.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Andy Bowles. I'm from the Curs Creek District. I'm the Treasurer at Rockbridge Bass Fire Department. And first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the funding that we get from the county and voted from the Board of Supervisors every year. It is a very substantial amount, and it is really appreciated. What I'm really, as Treasurer, wanted to bring and put some perspective on is at Rockbridge Bass, we get around $98,000 a year. Last year, we fundraised around $50,000 a year. At the end of the year, we didn't make money. That's not our aim. And the reason for that is the ever-increasing cost of replacing equipment. Over the last three years, Rockbridge Bass has been very fortunate with its community. And we've replaced our medical response vehicle from a 1995, I think it was, vehicle to now more purpose-built 2022. And this year, we replaced our pumper, which was a 1995. We replaced it with an engine. It's a 2000 model. And it cost us to put on the road $145,000. If we put something around a 2000, because we were looking, thinking, we need something newer. Let's go to at least 10 years newer. If we were to look at a 2010, Glasgow recently had just sold a 2012 for around $300,000. If we bought a new unit, it is in excess of $800,000. Those numbers from five years ago have seriously increased. And so the $98,000, it's great. It helps us run our department. What it doesn't do is help us replace equipment. We have in our fleet, the next oldest is a 2007, and then our tankers are 2009. They have a life, and that life, if you think 20 years, so our tanker in four years' time, five years' time, is going to need to be replaced. If we bought a new tanker, it's around half a million dollars. So it takes us more than a year to fundraise, to build up the reserves, to do that. Every 10 years, we have to replace firefighting equipment. One set, I'm sure Mr. Suter knows this from the county's point of view, one set is around $3,700. We, this year and last year, are replacing three sets. Next year, we're probably going to have to replace six. Because when they last bought them was 2015, they bought about 10 sets. So we've got 10 sets expiring next year. So we, every dollar counts to us. So that's why we really support the application.
I, I really thank you for that perspective.
That is everyone that's signed up.
All right. Anybody online?
Uh, no one's there.
Anybody else would like to speak on this issue? Gentlemen? For that, Mr. Lyons, if there's nobody out there that wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing. And then I will ask these gentlemen what they think.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that we go with the resolution that exempts all fire and rescue fundraising events and allows for one nonprofit event per year that would last up to three days.
With that correction, Mr. Dryden?
Yeah.
The word ones.
Say, I mean, I think we're dealing with two issues here. And when this first started, we were trying to continue the status quo with, with the fire and rescue. So I certainly fully support complete exemption for, for fire and rescue, whether on their land or the moon or anywhere else. But then when we get into the nonprofit thing, I, I, I struggle with that a little bit as the, the the General Assembly granted us the ability to obtain revenue through this method as we have other ones. But this, so this money comes to the, the, the general fund, so to speak, as does our sales tax revenue, as does lodging, all this other thing. So I struggle a little bit with, with, with picking out a group and having worked on it as a, as a finance member for several years, you know, I, I, I agree, we can progress and, and make changes, but I, I just, I, I want, I felt I needed that to be noted, that it's, it's, it's general revenues that, that were were foregoing for a certain group, and that, that, that may be good, but it's, I also will want to look closely at the, the annual allotments. They're already going to a lot of 501(c)(3)'s as well. So I want to help them. They help us. It's all good, but I, I struggle a little bit with that one, but I'll support what Mr. McDaniel put forward. I just wanted to note those, those things as I said.
Well, I will make my periodic plug for nonprofits that it's been a lot of time and energy making our county a better, better place to live in. And for me, it's really important. I think it's not as much about the money for them. It's they're doing one annual fundraiser and they struggle to have to do this administrative task that they don't know anything about. It's just a little, from my point of view, a little difficult to ask of them. So my preference would be the one fundraiser. I certainly understand Mr. Lewis's point. But that's mine.
I support Mr. McDaniel's recommendation, and the admissions tax was never meant to take money away from any organization. In fact, it still doesn't, whether you tax fire and rescue, whether you tax, they don't, we don't say charge admission and, and then a week later you can send your tax bill. It was to be in addition to. And it kind of caught us by surprise too, because our intent wasn't to be taxing tickets to carnivals and whatnot, and like anything, everything's good until lawyers get involved and then you, then you've got to either fix it or do the right thing, once you know you were doing it wrong. So I would, if Mr. McDaniel made a motion, I would happily second it.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? And I vote yes. We'll move on to the application for zoning tax amendment, CTA, to modify Section 302, Section 302.95, general store. Chris? Thank you, gentlemen, and.
Madam Chair, before they exit, I would just like, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service to our community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Tonight's public hearing is associated, this portion of the public hearing is associated with a zoning tax amendment pertaining to the general stores country. We have a particular project that, that may come to fruition that is essentially like the, the general store aspect of it, but also the option of having a restaurant associated with it. And so under current definition, a general store is defined as a single store, which offers for sale primarily most of the following articles: bread, milk, cheese, fresh meats and vegetables, canned and bottled foods, drinks, tobacco products, candy, papers, magazines, and general hardware articles. Gasoline may be offered for sale, but only as a secondary activity of a country general store. So that's our current definition of a country general store. The proposed amendment is fairly simple. It adds a, a third sentence to it that states a restaurant may be operated on the premises which provides meals to the general public. With that, at their June Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. If I recall correctly, there were no comments associated with the zoning tax amendment, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the zoning tax amendment to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Then I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
There's no one signed up.
All right, anyone online? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Then I will close the public hearing. Is there any other board discussion? Not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis? And I vote yes. Consideration of a resolution, a resolution to approve and adopt the 2024 comprehensive plan update.
But hey, I just have a brief summary. As you know, at the end of 2022, the Planning Commission embarked on updating the comprehensive plan on a monthly schedule. Essentially, we, they tackled each chapter and reviewed the, the previous chapter and what was modified. Then also, as you know, the, the Office of Community Development has held five community meetings associated with the comprehensive plan. Some were better attended than others. And then after those public meetings, public informational meetings, if you will, the, the, at June 25th, on June 25th, the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors held a specially called meeting to jointly discuss the comprehensive plan. At that meeting, again, June 25th, the Board of Supervisors instructed staff to advertise for the public hearing associated with the Planning Commission's role, as well as the Board of Supervisors instructed staff to advertise for the public hearing for the potential approval and adoption. So at the July 10th, 2020 meeting, the Board of Superv, Sub, Planning Commission adopted a resolution to recommend approval of the draft comprehensive plan. With that, I just handed out, Brandy handed out for me some modifications that have been made since that, since the recommended approval. And that was based on largely, it's all, all changes were done on the transportation chapter. We have this information available for public as well. Based on some comments we've received from VDOT, it's been several many months ago that we did a preliminary, VDOT did a formal preliminary view of the, of the program of the comprehensive plan, the transportation chapter. They had nominal comments there. The Stanton Planning District Office in Stanton had nominal comments. These comments that are associated with the update were came from Susan Hammond. These comments that are associated with the update were came from Susan Hammond, Alvin Trout at the Lexington residency. And so briefly, I'd just like to review the comments and the updates again, since the Planning Commission. One pertains to the rural rustic road program. Originally, we had the average trip daily ADTs between 400 and 1,500. Evidently, I think that number per state law has been modified and it's 50 or more vehicles a day, but not more than 750. And that's coming straight out of Code in Virginia. And then the other part was in there, the other part that you see in red there was already made after we posted it, posted the comprehensive plan draft with the Planning Commission. The other one, and this, this change was talked about at the Planning Commission, going into the Planning Commission, we did, on page 212, there was a Route 60 East corridor study that, that had a larger vehicular and pedestrian improvements. Based on the discussion with BDOT, that has been essentially necked down, if you will, to only pedestrian improvements. And so with the Planning Commission, it was an unknown cost. BDOT came back and it's an estimated 2.1 million for, for those improvements. The only other chapter change of the transportation chapter was found on page 412. And it originally stated, the, the description of the project was I-81 northbound and southbound shoulder improvements. And that has been modified or corrected, I should say, to I-81 southbound mile marker 200 to 205, three lane widening project. And so all of those are identified in red. And certainly last but not least, the staff would like to formally identify Ms. Hanson's work on the comprehensive plan. So you can see on the very last page, it's the title page that has y'all's name and the Planning Commission's name. And then we added with a special thanks and appreciation to Ms. Vivica Hanson for her diligent work on the 2024 comprehensive plan update. So I'd certainly recognize her and I'll recognize her here now, who's in attendance throughout the process.
Let everybody know who you are.
I've recognized her throughout the process, but, but I, I failed to formally recognize her in the, in the complaint itself.
Obviously, this is Chris's idea too. Vivica wasn't angling to be on there, but she sure does deserve it.
I think I gave her this update about five minutes before the board started, so just, just, just to get it in there, so.
Well deserved.
Absolutely. With that.
Just congratulations, Vivica, or I should say, thank you for your contribution now as planning and zoning specialist.
Absolutely, yes, I don't, I don't think we had an opportunity to.
Throughout this process, she's obtained another title.
Yes, yes, that took place at July 1st. So we appreciate all the efforts of Vivica and everyone else in the off-screen development staff. This is a, a public hearing associated with the Board of Supervisors. The, the Planning Commission did hold its public hearing. The, the majority of the comments associated with the Planning Commission's public hearing evolved around community and utility scale solar and some citizens' desire to have those in industrial zoning districts. So we can, we can comment potentially after this public hearing.
All right, are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Not, I will do so. Public hearing is open.
First on this is Mr. Steve Hart.
Yeah, like, that's a surprise. Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Thank you all for how you did this, for having the community meetings, for having the opportunity to comment, for trying to keep the community involved in it. We really do appreciate it. Like, talk about solar on a couple areas. There's a lot of levels, we could talk about it, but I want to focus on what is appropriate at a planning level or policy level document. First question really relates to how it's zoned. Currently, we do special exemptions in agricultural zone. Big issue I have with that, if you pull up the zoning map, you can't see where the solar fields are. If you got one, it's not an issue. If you got 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 or more, it becomes an issue. Your map is accurate, it's true, but it's not giving you the correct picture. Could do, could deal with that by rezoning them industrial. That causes another set of problems, because then you could do a lot of other things, but you'd at least see it on a map. Or we create all sorts of zoning districts. You could create a solar electric utility zoning. It would show up on the map and then you would see it and then everybody that looked at the map could see it. The second policy issue is how much? How much solar do we need in the county? How much is our responsibility to provide? Is there a limit? Is there not a limit? Either answer to that question is an affirmative statement that ought to be made in the plan. We don't put a limit on it. It needs to be stated affirmatively. Or this is our fair share. I think it's Rockingham County that did that. The last thing that I think really ought to be addressed in a planning document is the broader impact. Land conversion hurts the farm economy, one little cut at the time. You take land out, it hurts the farm economy. There's now cows that aren't going to be on that land that aren't going to need veterinary services, that aren't going to need feed services. It aren't going to be a place we can spread chicken litter. That this thing cascades into the larger, broader farm economy that needs farms as their customers. As we chip away at those, we're eventually going to lose one of those next echelon farm businesses, because they're not going to have a broad enough customer base. That goes back to the how much question. Those need to be discussed. I don't necessarily know what the answer is, but I really don't see us having that discussion. Y'all stuck me on the board exit, or board equalization, because I complained too much about taxes. We tax people on their views. This is going to impact their views. So it's going to impact the tax revenue in that regard. So we need to discuss that. And finally, it's also going to have the potential to impact tourism, because people come here because they want to look at what we have in the county. And if they don't like the look of the county, then they don't come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Next up is Jan Lowry, followed by Tony Tyree.
Jan Lowry, Cars Creek. I was at the June 10th, June, July 10th meeting. And I understand that an amendment was presented to the Planning Commission at that time to put solar on only industrial locations. Several speakers spoke in favor of it and gave, I thought, excellent recommendations and advice to the Planning Commission. Public hearing session was over. Planning Commission did not even address the fact that they had received an amendment to their planning. It's like, why are you holding public hearings? Why are you asking for public input if it's not even recognized? Now, they, a simple sentence could have been, we received an amendment, we've studied it, and we have chosen not to include it. At least it would have been recognized that they had done something with it, but not a simple word was said. So much of our government, ladies and gentlemen, has involved, doesn't involve the public anymore. You say it involves the public. Yes, we vote. Yes, we have certain privileges. But if we're not acknowledged that we attend these meetings and give input, pretty soon people are going to stop attending, which unfortunately happens too often. And then decisions are made without any public input. So I would appreciate it if you would share with your planning commission and other commissions that you have, that they at least acknowledge that information was received and looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Tyree, followed by Bill Russell.
Good evening, my name is Tony Tyree. I live in the South River District. And believe it or not, I've read the comprehensive plan, start to finish. Maybe not every little graph, but most everything. And I'd like to commend Chris and the people and everybody who had input in that, because it was very professionally done, very well written. And the plan is a good plan. All planning is good, it helps to avoid problems in the future. There's really good language in here, especially in the land use section, but the preservation of this county, the rural character, the streams, natural resources and all that. But the point I'd like to make is that we really need to observe this plan more closely when we're making decisions as a county, especially when these special zoning exemptions come up for whether it's solar or commercial intrusion into areas that have never had it before. And I think we really need to observe this plan much more closely when we're making our decisions. And one other point I'd like to make before I sit down, it seems like when these businesses come in here and apply for these special zoning things, like they get preferential treatment over the people who have lived here all their lives. And I think that's something else we need to address. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tyree.
Mr. Bill Russell, followed by Michelle Johnson.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Bill Russell from Cars Creek. I'd like to thank Jan Lowry for mentioning that we had, through the Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance, submitted a, a resolution asking that all solar, utility scale solar projects be moved to industrial zoning. We also asked that special use exceptions not be applied to applications. I know there's a legal issue with that. I would like to, to note, my personal opinion, planning does not drive policy, policy drives planning. So I would ask the supervisors that they at least ask that this be considered at the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the, the solar regulatory committee that's, that's meeting. I too have read the, the planning document, both the draft copies and the older copy online. And I do commend the planning document, the comprehensive plan for this county, I think is very good. Its big problem is it's, it's not really recognized in the process that, that we are complaining about in the consideration of utility scale project applications. When you're getting a special exemption, exception rather, the burden is on the applicant, period. And we have no, and I've sat through several of those discussions. We have no discussion of what it is that fundamentally is in the zoning decisions and in the planning document. We only are having discussions about why the exception should be granted and what kind of technical amendments are there. There's no overall policy consideration of what kind of county do you want to have in Rockbridge County. There are some very good sections of the existing planning documents and the draft that address that. I believe it could be beefed up, but I think they should be used and used more carefully in weighing a consideration of whether or not to give these projects the go-ahead in non-industrial zones. I, I have some, some practical suggestions also on the planning process. One would be, and I, I believe the Planning Commission may have already forwarded requests for this, that it, that a, at least a part-time, full-year position be granted to Chris's office to work on planning. That's a very complicated and very time-consuming project. I also think that we should consider more use of sectoral committees in that process as you update it. There is a lot of talent and knowledge in these hollows and mountains in this county on a wide variety of subjects. And I think they need to be included better.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Michelle Johnson, followed by Don Hinkle.
Well, madam chair and supervisors, Michelle Johnson, Cars Creek. And I am with the Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance. We did submit a resolution to the Planning Commission, asking them to limit solar, solar industrial scale solar projects to industrial zones and to stop the use of special use exemptions. We like the planning document and, and basically wanted to see it fulfilled more consistently. I'm not a person that would normally be asking for more government regulation, but when it comes to the consideration of these industrial scale solar project, there is an imbalance that needs to be redressed. Up until now, industrial scale solar projects have only been considered through requests for special use exemptions. And what's strange about that, no one has been asking about the real parties of interest, even though Virginia statutes allows the county to inquire into this. And a lot of people I've been talking to have found this lack of curiosity to be noticeable, especially given that many of these applicants have been held within multiple layers of shell companies. Sometimes these configurations frankly are so mysterious that it really does beg the question about whether these companies are trying to hide who the real party of interest is. And that will become pertinent at any point in time as these projects are turning agricultural lands into industrial sites. The solar, solar panels themselves, I think you've heard of this from previous speakers in the past, these are not full of benign materials and they're degrading at a faster pace than is commonly, than is, you know, publicly claimed. And frankly, we're at the front end of something that we don't know what the impact on the land is going to be 20 or 30 years from now. And that's a real concern for many of us. So far, requests for special use exemptions have been filed for seven solar projects, but these applications have been boilerplate applications. They haven't been special or unique. And the special use exemptions aren't asking industrial applicants why they should get an exemption. So it seems like we're treating each request as though the applicants have all the rights and county residents don't have any right to expect that zoning would be respected or applied. So we're asking the Board of Supervisors to limit industrial solar projects to industrial zoned areas where they're already allowed and stop using the granting of special exceptions to override zoning restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Hinkle, followed by Stephen Kater. Excuse me.
I have no additional comments that haven't been made about this topic. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Stephen Kater, followed by Gigi Olive.
Steve Kater, South River. Thanks for the privilege. Some general comments about the draft comprehensive plan. There's no overall introduction that explains the charter, purpose, scope and authority of this document. Why was it written, particularly because some sections seem to be getting ignored in practice? Number two, there should be a summary of versions and revisions. I downloaded a copy on July 8th, a new version was posted shortly after that. The revision date on the cover of the latest version is July 10th, but the title of the document online is July 22nd, the timestamp. So where are the changes coming from? I noticed the length of the document is changing. I don't, I have to leaf through the whole thing to find each change. Fortunately, they are highlighted, but it's laborious. The number three, there seems to be little in the way of a true plan in this document. And the question should be, where do we want to be as a county in two, five, 10, 20 years? It's answered in pieces, but it's really not clear. For example, the charts show that our population is aging and that the number of farmers, the number of farms and the acreage farmed is shrinking. Is that a good thing? Do we want to reverse that? The plan should address that. Finally, regarding utility scale solar electric facilities. As you know, on March 11th, volcano energy was denied a special exception permit to build a solar facility on farmland near US 11 and Steel's Fort Road. They subsequently filed suit seeking judgment that the Board of Supervisors' decision was arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable and ultra virus. Regardless of whether the case has merit, I think this points to some problems with the process of permitting utility scale power generating facilities in agricultural zones by special exception. On page 264, item 18 in the latest draft of the comprehensive plan, it calls for the development of a solar ordinance to provide guidance for approving these special exception permits. And unfortunately, the draft of that ordinance, if you look at it, it fails to create firm limits on the things it addresses. For example, Section 717.15 landscaping and ground cover, it says, "The standard buffer shall consist of, at a minimum, a staggered double row landscape strip at least 20 feet in width outside the perimeter of the facility." Great, but in the next paragraph, it says, "In locations where the visual impact of the solar facility would be minimal, the standard buffer requirement may be." the standard buffer requirement may be reduced or eliminated entirely." So they basically gutted any meat that was in that requirement. This this language invites more challenges to the approval process. And so I contend that allowing these facilities on agricultural land by special exception permit is inadequate to address the goals of the comprehensive plan. And item 18 on page 64 should be removed and should be replaced with a guidance that utility scale power generating facilities should be only on industrial zoned land. That's, that should be asked to put in the land development regulations.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Jeannie Oliver, South Creek, South River District. And I just wanted to say that really, first of all, thank the county for all the work and details that they put into developing the plan. I understand that the district meetings were not required. And we really, really appreciated that opportunity to go to the district to have an actual dialogue where we can ask questions and get answers and give input on the plan. I think there's a, there's a common theme that we're hearing amongst the folks here and amongst the several meetings that I've attended. And Mr. Lyons, you made a comment a couple of months ago, I think it was one of my first meetings, that you found it a little, I don't want to attribute the word frustrating to you because maybe that wasn't exactly what you meant, but a little bit of frustration or dismay at the lack of community involvement in a lot of the work that you guys do. And so we're here now, right? We're ready to be involved. We read every single page of this document. I love it so much that I brought it with me. I got a hard copy, right, with my little notes in there. I've read every single page of the land development regulations. And I think the themes that we're hearing from people are a couple of things. One is, this is an incredibly special county. It's a wonderful place to live. And one of the core goals in this plan, and what we hear from all the folks that come here, is that we don't want to turn this county into Charlottesville or into an industrial location. We don't want this to turn into concrete and commercial businesses. We want to protect the agricultural and the forest resources that we have. We want the natural beauty of this county to stay the way it is. And so I understand that, you know, John told me many times, and so did Mr. Sladen, that this is a philosophical document. And I really respectfully beg to differ. The citizens of this county that contributed to this, that came to the meetings, that read every single word that's in here. We take this as a very serious guide, the strategic plan for the development of our homes. And we bought land here under the promise that this was how the land was going to be developed. Not just arbitrary decisions and not based on the other concern that I've heard from others that a business owner can come in and ask for a special exception. And the burden of denial now becomes on the citizens, that we all have to prove why this isn't the right place for a business. And we feel it should be the opposite. Exceptions are exceptions. And if, if a business proposal doesn't fit within the strategies and the goals of this document, then it should be denied. It shouldn't require all of us to spend copious amounts of time collecting signatures and preparing speeches and passionately coming to you guys, begging you to please not approve something that is not in accordance with this plan. And so I support this plan. I read every, every notion of it. And I just want to mention that we appreciate all of your time and your efforts. And we want you to please make your decisions based on this plan. Thank you.
Has anyone signed up to speak?
Everybody online.
No ma'am.
There is one hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. iPhone, I was looking. Sorry, my apologies. Okay, just says iPhone, but you're going to need to unmute. Okay, whoever's on the iPhone, if you could unmute on your end, I can't do it here. I'm quite sure what to do with that one.
I think we need to.
Step away.
All right, if that is it for public comment.
We have more.
Oh, we do.
Hands raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, come up.
Cynthia Kater, South River District. I just want to say that I agree with everything that's been said. But I think the overriding principle is that the comprehensive plan talks about the consistency of preserving the rural character, the agricultural heritage of Rockbridge County. If you've been out to a number of the wonderful solar places that we've had approved. I mean, we just drove out to Halasine, which is out on the way to Goshen. There's this big old plant, 2.5 megawatt plant, sitting in the middle of nowhere. You'd think it wouldn't make any difference, but it takes away from the purpose of the comprehensive plan, which is preserving the county's rural character. It looks like an industrial site. So what the community is saying is, we really need to specifically think hard and fast about rezoning the solar and wind complexes into a, as Steve Hart said, a special zoning kind of area or something so that those of us who really bought concerning. Okay, so our piece of property was on Mackey's Lane, is on Mackey's Lane. We had to fight to make sure that my neighbor didn't put in a solar field, a solar complex, because it's right at my front door. And I would look at it day and night for the rest of my life because of his decision. That's what my friends are talking about. You wouldn't want a solar complex outside your front window. We bought that piece of property thinking we were coming in to a rural area. And we want it to remain that way. I'm sure everybody else does too. I mean, otherwise, let's put solar panels on all these. Let's put it on WNL. Let's put it on those things. The solar company that we talked to said they didn't want that because it was too expensive. Agricultural land is cheap. Let's not sell the farmers out from under their land. We don't want that. So please, rezone the, rezone the areas or put it under agricultural, not agriculture, but industrial land, whatever you want to do. But please protect our rural communities.
Ma'am Chair, if, I think we've.
Oh, yes.
Got this figured out here.
Okay.
I hope. There we go. Whoever's listed as iPhone.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. First of all, good evening. My name is Stephanie Sellers. I'm in Natural Bridge area. And I just want to say that I think you've heard from the community. Solar's not a great thing. It's a solar generation facility. Data centers are going to be the next thing. I highly suggest that everybody really do a deep dive on these companies. A lot of them are headquartered in other countries and they have umbrellas companies. All the good old boys, you're acting like they're local, but they're not. So there's just a lot of not good stuff going on with that. But all you have to do is turn to other counties and see what's happened there. Palatine, Virginia, Hanover County, Virginia, Louisa, Charlotte. And I just heard y'all vote in a drought emergency situation. I don't know what that entails exactly, but obviously you're concerned about water. Guess what hogs water? Solar and data centers. So I cannot implore you enough that you need to take it out of the conditional use permit. You need to stop this nonsense and be like Rappahanna County and say, you know, we're not doing it here. And the reason they can't do it on rooftops is because those solar panels need to be rinsed off and cooled down. They need the aquifers. It's not about the cost of the land. So I just wanted to call in and tell you that I have studied this extensively. I'm here to share any information that anybody out there would like to have. And I am highly against this county turning into a solar generation facility industrial. I saw, and also a burden on the community and the precious resource of water. So I just wanted to add that. And I appreciate everybody that came out and talked tonight. And I think you're on the ball and you're heading the right way. And again, I implore you to check out these companies and also check out poor people that are getting solar on their homes. And then the solar companies are going bankrupt. People are signing, farmers are signing leases and the companies are selling, going bankrupt. They're not paying the farmers. This is not good for America. This is not good for Americans. I promise you that. And any information anybody needs, I'll be happy to share. Y'all have a great evening and thank you for giving me a minute to speak.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you just tell your last name for the record, please?
Yes, Sellers, S E L L E R S.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Was there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Alan Stout. And I'm in the South River District. I've listened to the comments. By the way, I have read the plan and I think it has a lot of good things in the plan. I listened to the comments tonight and I agree with Steve, Steve Hart, Bill Russell. And pretty much everybody has made comments about the solar. I didn't really come thinking that we're going to be addressing solar so much tonight because I know that August the 14th at 7 o'clock with the Planning Commission, we have a, we have a meeting on the Warm Run Project, which is in my backyard. So I'm gearing up for that. I have, I have spent the last year and a half educating myself on solar extensively. I've been involved with a, I mean, since the, since the Fairfield one. And I've, I've been on the Fairfield site. And it is atrocious. I mean, it is actually absolutely a terrible scar on that community. And I've in, in reading, in reading the, the comprehensive plan, one of the things in there you talk about in Rockbridge County are there, there were actually three identified tourist spots. And one of those spots was right off of 64 on Route 11 over where Walmart and Lowe's and Spencer's and all that is. And my home is right behind there. And that's a tourist area. I mean, and they've got the Horse Center there. And it, and they want to put a 50 acre solar there, which is really just a footstep into the 130 acres that is there. And I, in fact, I live in Huffman's mother's home now. We bought it three years ago. So on, and I've talked, I've been through the community and I've talked to a lot of people. And in the next three weeks, I'm going to be talking to a lot more people. And there is nothing, I mean, there is nothing but negative feeling in the community with regard to these silver power plants. And by the way, too, there's been, there's, I think President Trump even made a mention last week about solar and renewable energy. And he called it a scam in America. And that fossil fuel, I mean, fossil is not going away. And he's, he's planning on, you know, tapping all of our natural resources. And I believe based on my studies, the solar is probably less than two year of life left. The technology is not delivering what it, what people, what the solar companies claim it is. So August the 14th.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be at the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Not. I will close the public hearing. Chris, would you like to speak on any of these?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I can respond to some of it. And if there has any questions, I can certainly ask or attempt to answer them. So as soon, we, we did receive a resolution from the Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance. Same day, probably within an hour, we passed that resolution on to the Board of, to the Planning Commission as well as members of the Board of Supervisors. I don't know if it was directly discussed, the term resolution was discussed by members of the Planning Commission, but they, they certainly did discuss the current draft ordinance and how it pertained to solar. We reviewed that based on direction from the Board of Supervisors. At the end of last year, 2023, the Board of Supervisors set up a solar committee. In my opinion, it's a diverse group containing one member of the Board of Supervisors, one member of the Planning Commission, representative from Farm Bureau, Representative Rack, and two community members at large, if you will. And so as shared with, with many in the audience, the, the solar committee has drafted a draft solar ordinance. And that, just like any zoning tax amendment, like the one we went through here, will go through a public process and, and our goal is, is to do that as soon as the comprehensive plan. That, that was done in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update, obviously, the drafting of the solar ordinance. So I've stated in multiple emails that that certainly is not our intent for that, let that draft solar ordinance sit on a shelf. And so we will be pursuing, continuing that conversation, I should say, in the, in the very near future.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Sladen?
When you were working on the plan, what, what was the discussion around solar and listing as an industrial site?
There, there's, there's very few, if any, that, that we reviewed that did not allow it by special exception. We looked up and down 81, if you will, Shandau Valley, if you will. And it's very common for it to be a used by special exception in the agricultural zoning district. So the, the current draft, as I shared with the members of the Board of Supervisors, would, would not, would not change that as far as allowing it by use by special exception in agricultural zoning district. And I will reiterate, because the, reiterate, I say that because it was discussed at the Planning Commission, that the, the process for, the process for a special exception is verbatim the same process as a rezoning application as far as the, the application, a little bit different fee schedule there. But the application, once it's deemed complete by the Office of Community Development, it gets forwarded to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has an advisory role to the Board of Supervisors. They make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that has the final authority on the special exception, whether it be for solar or campground, wedding event venue, whatever the special exception may be in an agricultural zoning district or whatever zoning district we're in. Obviously, as you know, based on tonight, in order to have a special exception, a, a public hearing associated with a special exception or rezoning, that we have to, we, the Office of Community Development, have to advertise the notice of public hearing. And we do that in three ways. One is certified mail to all direct landowners. And we do treat, again, regardless of application, we treat the project, the, the applicant's holding as a large piece. You know, if they own a 50 acre parcel that's surrounded by their own holdings, we of course do the, the entire landowner's holdings and then do certified mail. We also are required to do a notice of public hearing in the newspaper two weeks prior to, and then we post the property with a zoning action pending. Or rezoning pending, depending if it's a special exception or a rezoning.
It would seem to me that zoning to industrial would, would have some very bad unintended consequences in, in this situation. Chris, can, can you speak to that? I mean, how, how do you, how do you see the consequences of zoning industrial for those properties that are deemed suitable for solar?
Well, I mean, obviously zoning industrial property is very limited in Rockbridge County. I can't remember quite, quite off the top of my head, but I think it's 0.4%. Somewhere around there, ballparking where we have industrial zoning. Some of that is along the, the public, where we have public water and public sewer. But obviously, that's our, that's our most intensive use. And when I say intensive use, and, and some, some consider solar as far as it up and, up and operational as a fairly passive use of land. And industrial zoning, some of these, some if not most of the permitted uses and uses by special exception. And industrial zoning, some of these, some if not most of the permitted uses and uses by special exception would be more intensive as far as noise, dust, and odor traffic associated with it. And that's not, that's not downplaying the, the construction of these said solar facilities. But once it up, up and operational, it's, it's limited noise, dust, odor, and traffic. So I could certainly go over, you know, some of the permitted uses and uses by special exception in, in the industrial zoning district, if y'all would like.
Well, we will get to that when we tackle the, the solar.
And it is, I will, I will say, it is currently the only, we, as you know, we treat solar projects as a public utility. It, it meets that definition. And the industrial zoning district is, is the one zoning district in Rockbridge County that has public utilities as a by right use or a permitted use. We have not seen any solar applications associated with industrial zoning districts. I think, again, that's, that's due to the fact that I won't say the majority because I don't know, but there, it's some of our larger tracks that are zoned industrial are, are long locations with public water, public sewer.
All right, gentlemen, any other questions?
No, I'd just like to, again, thank everybody for coming out and speaking. They've made some good points and gives us a lot to consider. Just some other points that we've heard from people that aren't here tonight that we need to consider too are the farmers. I don't think we're selling out the farmers. I think the applications are, are coming from farmers who can no longer farm and don't have anybody to pass their land on to or, or need to generate an income so that they can have some sort of retirement. So there are two sides that need to be considered. Y'all have made some excellent points. I'm anxious to hear from the committee and, and hear from the Farm Bureau and see what their take on it is. We, we want to protect the farmland. But we don't own the farmlands. So we've got to, you know, rather than saying, we've got to help the farmers to use their land the way they would like without having an adverse effect. And I think when you look at the Fairfield project now, it's easy to look back and, and see some of the mistakes that were made. But if you were in the room the night it got approved, you had the people who lived around there and in the community in Fairfield who were very supportive of the farmer and asking us to allow them to do this on their land. And granted, that was a, a huge project and it it didn't turn out the way we wanted. So we want to, we don't want to continue making mistakes like that, but we don't want to just say not allowed at all because I'm sure there are some instances in some places where it might be appropriate. So I look forward to meeting with the Plan, Planning Commission. I think, you know, one of the problems was we, we didn't have any set rules and hopefully the ordinance will give us some strong guidelines to go by.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Anything else, gentlemen?
I moved, we approved the conference plan with, thanks to the planning commission and staff. Generating what most have said is a, is a good document and a living document as well. So we will continue to keep it updated.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And to be clear, that's the resolution prepared by Mr. Dryden.
The, is it with your changes, your changes from today?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, I apologize.
Let, let, let's just make sure we have, we are approving the right addition. Mr. Dryden, are we good?
Good to me.
Fine. Alrighty, let me see. Mr. Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all for coming. We will move on to the monthly staff reports. If you've read them, with, is there a motion to accept the reports?
Some of them.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
And I vote yes.
Are there any board comments or committee reports?
I have none this evening.
All right. Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes.